Okay, now I'd like to call the order on our Monday, October 27th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting, and we'll begin this meeting with the Fledge of Allegiance. A pledge of-
Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have registration to address the board on any of the actionable items on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to make comment on those agenda items, there is a form up here near Attorney Elwood. You could fill out return to the board table so we can recognize you at the proper time. We also have public comment at the conclusion of the meeting for any topic that anyone would like to address the board on. Again, the same process, just grab one of these forms by Attorney Elwood and return it to the board table, and we'd be happy to recognize you. All board members were provided background information in preparation for this evening's meeting, and our meeting is being livestreamed, and we welcome those who are watching us remotely. So with that, we'll get started with the Good News Report presented by the Portage High School students.
Good evening, Portage High School Board members. This is the Good News Report. I'm Michelle Villalbres.
Our middle school average culture teacher, Miss Times-Gate, and her class are taking their food from the tower to the table. The group recently harvested the romaine lettuce grown in Fegley's new hydro-clinic stadium. Our food service and staff then use the fresh lettuce and stuffed salads and as a tasty topping to top us in the cafeteria.
National School Lunchtime. Our cafeteria recently took students on a flavor-packed food tour for National School Lunchtime. Case of what? Portage High School people picked off with General Tsoas and broccoli ramen bowl, while middle and elementary schools enjoyed the General Tsoa chicken with veal meat. Tuesday served up a classic alder and crispy chicken wrapped with sauce, and the journey wrapped up Wednesday with the rural Italy's classic Narnia pizza. A big thank you to our center staff for creating this delicious adventure for our students.
We have an incredible honor of dedicating West Coast to your last and tribute to a true Portage legend, Coach West Coast. Led Portage football for nineteen seasons, leading behind Morton, just an impressive record of 156 wins. Three conference titles, four sectional championships, and the 19W7 Class 3A State Championship. Coach Klein did just build the team, both leaders, above leaders, a brotherhood and a tradition that still lives up on now. Every yard game on the playing field carries a piece of his enduring legacy, and he goes on, and his might on boys will live on for generations.
Portage Township Schools was shining brightly at the City of Origins Light Up the Boards event this month. Several of our elementary schools took the time to come and spend together with their families and create and eliminate a display to the future theme of the kids. Everyone did an amazing job.
Our elementary schools have begun celebrating our students' very first best friends, grandparents. Our students and their special guests are enjoying treats, activities, being teachers and staff, and performances at each of the schools. Thank you to all of our amazing grandparents for your support and putting a smile on our students' faces.
Thank you very much. Stay tuned for more of those.
Great. Melissa, thank you for bringing that back to the board. Means we always enjoy those reports. Okay, next up, we've got our presentation of the New School Boundary presented by Dr. Stevens.
First of all, good evening. Thank you for your attention. Not too long ago, the board recently approved the renaming of what will be the new middle school to Aylesworth Middle School. And in that, there are many different new opportunities for our corporation in moving to a different model. This undertaking not only addresses our aging building of Willow Creek, but it also gives us an opportunity to balance enrollment disparities, address transportation across our district, and be fiscally responsible for the future. So first of all, I wanted to share with you the current challenges. So the first, we will be addressing situations that we have different enrollments across our different educational facilities at the elementary level. We want to try to mitigate the underutilization clause in state rules. And being that we have a downward trend in our enrollment, we needed to make sure we right-sized. And of course, many of you attended Willow Creek and know the different halls that have been built on to that building, and it simply is not functioning as it once did. So we needed to update that and make sure that we address the needs of our kids in that area. And we feel like by doing that, we can further better address all the way through our corporation. So in doing that, Aylesworth Elementary School, which at one point was a middle school, will be demolished at the end of this current school year. Now, that was not our initial goal, was to lose that elementary school, but in order to meet all the right stipulations in building and today's world, we have to utilize some footprint of a current building in building that. And so part of the new Aylesworth Middle School will actually sit on the same footprint as the current Aylesworth Elementary School. And through that, this situation will be, at one point, there will be both Aylesworth Middle School and Willow Creek Middle School both standing in the same area on the corner of Central and Willow Creek. Once we can walk the kids into the new building, then the demolition of current Willow Creek will happen. And that will, hopefully, we're in conversations with the state or with the city to make sure we address all of their desires and needs and follow the rules. But we hope that that becomes a real jewel in the city and gives a real opportunity for the city of Portage to put its best foot forward. So as you can see, that's our current boundaries. And Ms. Tate, who is our Transportation Director, can tell you that some of those lend itself to some long bus rides. If you look at the very bottom of that map, you can see the South Haven. And South Haven literally encompasses students across the whole breadth of our whole corporation. So you can go almost all the way to Hobart and have kids in that, and you can go all the way to 49 and have kids in that. And that makes for a long bus ride for that one. So in addition to that yellowish area is Aylesworth. So in addition to dividing that up appropriately, we also had the opportunity to change the whole footprint and allow better transportation, more efficient transportation, more safe transportation for our kids, and address other needs that I've mentioned. So with that, this is the new boundary line, okay? Now, you can see to the north, Crisman gains a great deal. But when you think about the land that is included in that, it also includes parts of a national park, a great deal of industrial area, and so that could absorb that and not take on a tremendous number of kids. The others are very well-balanced. So one of the challenges I put to our consultants, who are a part of Power School, they are a part called Decision Insight, was that I'd like to have balanced enrollment across our different elementary schools. And with this, six of the seven will be three-section schools, which makes it a great deal more equitable in terms of programming that we can allow. Plus, it allows for better teamwork in the different grade levels. And in terms of scheduling students so that they can best perform, that gives us a great deal more opportunity. Those six schools will range in size, and I asked them to make them as close to similar size as possible. So between those six schools, the range of size will be 312 to 373 currently. At least, that's the proposed numbers for next school year. In doing that, approximately 28% of this year's K-4 students will find their way to a different school, okay? Now, obviously, all of the Aylesworth students will find their way to a new school, and all the 5th grade students in this realm will move to, or this year's 4th grade will move to a 5th grade new building. One thing that's exciting, and I know Dessa Kelly has mentioned this with excitement in her voice, is the new 5th and 6th grade building will be brand-new. The only people that will have any experience at that building are the current 6th grade teachers of Fegley. And so everybody else will have a new experience, and we're looking forward to providing that. So in doing this, there's a lot of excitement at all different levels. This year's 3rd grade students will be, you know, the kind of the big guys on campus next year, and that's a new experience for them. We look for new leadership opportunities for those students. We are considering different clubs and opportunities for those 5th and 6th grade students so that they can continue to enjoy extracurriculars. So we're trying to make sure we address all of those areas. Our Fegley Intermediate School, or middle school that will become an intermediate school, will be led by Pat Mills. And our current Willow Creek will continue to be called Willow Creek for the next couple of years, and that will be led by Emery Caballero. Now, none of that has been done without some trepidation and some concern and some worry from a lot of different people. And so what does this mean? It means next year, Fegley Intermediate School will be just 4th and 5th grade students. This year's 4th and 5th grade students. And next year's 6th and 7th grade students will be all at Willow Creek. So the transportation changes a bit in that 4th and 5th grade. Students will all be traveling from across the whole district into one building. 6th and 7th grade students will all be traveling into one building. Ms. Tate has organized that so that we can make it work. And having done that, I know a couple of years ago, we went to a three-tiered system. We still continue to need to do that. But the only change that we needed to do to make that work was to back up the intermediate and middle school group 10 minutes. So they will back up their time 10 minutes. The K-4 schools and the high school will remain on the same schedules. So we feel like that was the least intrusive part that we could do and still get the kids safely to the different buildings. Now, we felt strongly about the movement to an intermediate and middle school model because of grouping similarly developmental students together. We've always had concerns, and I taught middle school for 10 years, and I always had concerns having some 6th graders at the beginning of the school year who were really still 5th graders. And some of my 8th graders, who I may have retained, were almost 16 and could almost drive to school. And so that's a big display of a developmental time. So this addresses that in a way. And so we really feel like we are addressing the educational needs as well as the safety needs and the developmental areas of their health. So how do we plan to communicate all this out to people, of course pending your approval? We have begun this, we've had several huddles across all the different areas of our communication and all across our corporation, different schools. We've had sit-downs with the 5th grade teachers. We've had sit-downs with the 6th and 7th grade teachers. Because there will be change and there will be new information. So we have shared as we've gone along. We hope that we have helped allay some fears. But we will continue to have those huddles. And we have somewhat deliberately waited to make some announcements until we have official approval. We don't want to put the cart before the horse. If the school board does not decide to move along with this, then we don't want to put that fear into people before knowing for sure that we can move forward. So having said that, Melissa Devers is patiently waiting to see if there is approval tonight before she clicks an email that goes out to staff to allow that and also to the families to let them know that this change is coming. We will then continue that because we will then reach out to individual students who are addressed. So we said the 28%, we're going to identify them by name, and we will reach out to them individually. Let them know so that they know if they are going to be one of those families that has a different school next year. Now, obviously, all 5th grade will, all 4th grade will, and then the K-3 will get individual information. So we'll pass that along as we move along. As I said, we have included the staff as we've gone along. Now, having said that, once we have approval and move forward, we will begin having after-school opportunities for the different teachers to meet with Pat and Emery because a good number of them have not ever worked with them before. So we want to give them an opportunity to get to know them even ahead of starting that school building and to try to help start some of that organic growth that we will have. This will be the first time we have all of our 5th grade in one building, all of our 6th grade in one building. So that's going to take quite a bit of coordination. And everybody has their own teaching styles and personalities, and we're going to have to meld that together into a successful building. So as I said, Melissa is ready to push the go button. But also, we have plans for open houses so that the families can come in and meet with those new teachers and new principals that are interested in coming and visiting, seeing those schools, and hopefully put our best foot forward with those families so they feel welcome as well, and the excitement that we do. The next few slides are all about how we would communicate. And then after that, we will have a frequently asked questions for the staff and for families that we'll publish and will update. Melissa has always been very good about keeping up to date on any requests. And if there are questions about that, we have added, or we will add toward the end of the families, we have a PTS Communications email that we would ask anybody that they want to have clarification would reach out to that. Melissa monitors that, but then we have regular meetings that we bring together all the different groups. This will be across-the-board information because transportation is involved, maintenance and buildings is involved, food service is involved. All of the different pieces are going to have to have some new information and new opportunities to meet with kids. So this is going to be an exciting time. At this point, I would answer any questions you may have, but we also anxiously await your decision.
Thank you, thank you. Very exciting and congrat- I mean, I know this has taken a lot of work to try to figure all this out and put it together. And I know the Transportation Department had to be a huge piece of that. Also, I think we're all aware of a lot of anxiety among teachers, right? Especially some longtime teachers in certain buildings that they have to start over in a new building. And we appreciate all of you and those who are affected and know that none of this happens with like a knee-jerk reaction, right? This has been something that's been making a long time. I think it's exciting. I think it's exciting to have those 5th and 6th graders together in that building. And the really cool thing is the new building, all kids will have an opportunity at some point through their career at Portage Township Schools to be able to experience the new building. We haven't had one of those in Portage for a very, very long time, so I think that's exciting. So yeah, me personally, and I'm sure I speak for a lot of us here on the board, we appreciate the efforts and the hard work, but we also understand the anxiety that will come with our teachers and our students that are going to be moving. So that communication is the key, and I know we have the best with communication sitting right here. So I think that will help make that go much smoother than it would normally.
Absolutely, and we appreciate that. I would want to say, the teachers have been phenomenal in terms of being willing to listen and willing to work and give their input, and hopefully, we've done a good job of taking that in and utilizing it. Obviously, you can't make everything come to life, but you certainly hope that you can meet a lot of the expectations. And as I said in several different meetings, I really hope people are excited about this move, not scared of it. So it's something that we hope to make a real positive.
Anybody have any other questions or comments for Dr. Stevens?
I have a couple of questions. One is when a teacher, for example, let's say it's a 5th grade teacher, and decides, maybe I want to go into and teach the 7th and 8th grade. Is that a possibility for teachers to not have to loop and stay with their same grade level but choose a different grade level altogether?
That's always a possibility in any of our years. This one is a little bit different in particular because we are involuntarily transferring some people. So we want to honor that and give them first shot at a lot of things. But after those people have found a home, then if there are people who have resignations or retirements, then they are perfectly available to, as long as licensing is appropriate. We've always allowed people to make those requests to move to those other positions throughout our corporation.
And so I've been part of an experience similar to this. And in one case, it was that the principal selected the teachers. Or in another situation, it was based totally on... No, not random, seniority. So have you figured that out? Is it going to be seniority, principal chooses, interviews?
It's a little bit of a hybrid of that because we have to take into consideration some of the special training that some of our people have had. We want to honor that and make sure that we don't put people in a spot where they would be less than if they were effective. So for the most part, we will follow seniority. And in this, one thing that Dr. Allen has promised from the very beginning is that no one will lose a job. They will have a position here at Portage Township Schools. Now, having said that, this is going to change some things. And maybe you may be asked to move to a different kind of a situation, but always following our licensing. And we have felt very strongly that we want to honor seniority whenever possible. So that's what will be our kind of our first go-to question, unless there is some special training that has happened that kind of pushes them into a different realm. And that has been, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's been something that we have discussed along the way with the Exclusive Bargaining Unit and different people individually.
One thing we feel very, very strongly about as well, to answer your other question, is that our folks have already proven their value in this district. They interviewed and earned their positions. So by no stretch are we going to require any type of interview process. Our people are our people. We want our people, and we don't want them to feel like their role depends on an interview when we see daily what they do for kids, and that speaks volumes. So we aren't doing any type of an interview process.
Good, thank you. And then my next question would be, you know, I know as a teacher and building administrator, the thought of moving and all this information, all the materials that you have accumulated over the years, who is going to, how is that going to work? Is that going to be...
That's going to be quite an undertaking.
I looked at him.
There's no question about that.
One man in a truck back there.
So that's one thing that we spoke about this week. And we will be coming, I can almost assure you that we will be coming back to you with our request to hire some outside moving people. We simply, Mylee and his people are really, really good, and they handle a lot of things. But this might be a little bit big for the manpower that we have. So we are probably going to have to bring to you some proposals to have some outside movers do that. Individually, the teachers, we're going to ask them to designate what it is that they specifically want from one spot to the next in terms of their personal items. And in the past, we have had a pallet outside their door and say, we can put anything you want on there. We'll shrink wrap it and get it to your other door. And that's probably how a lot of that will happen. Now, I've heard from several people that say, I have a lot more than a pallet. And so we will have to make some arrangements to try to help make that work. We've also had people make situational requests. Like I know Dr. Allen has feels very strongly about having a kidney-shaped table at all of our elementary levels. And some of these people say, but I want my kidney-shaped table. Fair enough. We'll figure out a way to get those things. And we really get these people to the new building and say, here's the blank slate. What do you need to make this happen, and we'll try our very best to make that work. And then also, we're going to try to just make those situations as comfortable as we can because I don't want that to be the worry. I want them to worry about the quality instruction that we've asked them to give out to us.
I'm also concerned about, let's say, a teacher is retiring and doesn't really want to move. The last year, you know, are they able then to stay in their building and make arrangements? And I'm sure with the principal to kind of maybe move another teacher if they're volunteering to do that? I mean, is that possible?
No, because Dr. Stevens did ask, in particular, this would affect mainly those in 5th grade, let's say. And we did ask, he sent out a survey. There are three 5th grade teachers who would like to stay put in their building and three K-4 teachers who would like to go up.
Actually, there's four now.
Okay, we're allowing that to be a flip-flop. When we met with our committee of teachers and said, look, this is an ask outside of what we already agreed upon. How does everybody feel about this if you were in this situation? We waited a couple of days. Dr. Stevens reached back out to everyone, and everyone's like, that's a fair change. Let's make that adjustment.
It works out well that the seniority of the people that would like to switch are very, very close within months of each other. And so it's not as if a rookie is getting to pick past someone else. So it worked out very well.
So those unique circumstances, we've asked them to specifically reach out to Dr. Stevens, and we've worked through so far every one of those that are just a one-off. It's been an easy situation to accommodate. So I know that there's a little bit, one thing that we also added last week that was new and we had not thought about when we met with the committee, I guess, no, that was two weeks ago, was what happens if I'm a 5th grade teacher? Because we're not of the belief of being able to bump everybody. It's just, when you're talking about being a collective team, sometimes, you know, you may end up being that person who needs to go, even if someone has fewer years than you. So let's say there's a 4th grade teacher with five years, and I'm 20 years, but I'm 5th grade, they're 4th grade. I don't get to bump them. However, if a spot opens over the summer, then I get the first right with my seniority to return back to my elementary school. So that was something that they kind of asked in some way, can we try to honor seniority with that? And so that was an accommodation, again, that we asked everybody how they felt about it that's on the committee. So these one-offs, we're trying to work through today. We met virtually with all the 5th grade teachers. Like I said, two weeks ago, we met with the intermediate and the middle school committees. And these questions continue to flow through different representatives of our teachers so that we're getting that information back out to them. They've helped us think through things that I would have never, never thought of that are really important questions.
I want to thank Dr. Allen as an honor that she has put together a great document over... over all those questions over the course of our, because we've had questions from the music department, how do we best accommodate these students? We've had from our PE department, we've had special Neds, we've had our regular general ed teachers, we've had all the, and she has compiled all those, and over the last week, a group of us have met regularly and tried to make sure that we have taken into, all those into account as we start to make the published, public announcements, so that we have addressed their questions, and some of, so what will, the process will be in the very near future, is I will physically go to the person from Alesworth with the top of this seniority list and say, here are the opportunities for you at the K to four level, which one do you want? And I will give them a date to pick. The ones that I have off the cuff spoken to said, I won't need a day, I'd know where I want to go, and because of the transparency that we've talked about, that all of our buildings, well, six of our seven buildings will be three situations, three section buildings, they can kind of tell what is going to be available. If the, if the school has two at second grade, they're probably going to get a third one, and so they could kind of pre-determine where it is that they want to go at this point.
Great, any other questions or comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board this evening? If not, I did not see any public comment forums come up, so we'll move on to our agenda items. We've got the superintendent's consent agenda, which has got the personnel report for October the 27th, the donation report, the claims report, and the facility use request report. We have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve this superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? Very non-call, roll please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes, trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Next, we've got the board's consent agenda, which contained the minutes of our discussion meeting from October the 13th. We have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have the motion and a second? Any discussion or questions? Very non-call, roll please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes, trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to board development committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
The redevelopment, redevelopment commission met on October 9th, that was a special meeting, and then the regular meeting was on the 23rd. Some of the items presented were the residential housing development, Sandy Trail, Providence, Bauer Farms, Swanson Trails, and River Race, River Trace. The new business included the use of grants for the fire and police department, as well as the park department, to purchase several items. There's been ongoing discussion about the parking lot and the road and the paving at the, at the mall on Central Avenue. The Phase Two of the Central Avenue project was presented, so this project, project is expected to be completed by Thanksgiving, so there's going to be a lot of celebrations going on.
Bomb fire, right?
Right, I asked how we were going to celebrate, and the mayor answered, he was going to have a bonfire, so that's a good thing. The next scheduled meeting will be November 6th, another special meeting, and the 20th. That's 4:30 at City Hall. These meetings are live streamed and recorded, so the residents are able to find out more, more information and details about all of these projects.
Great, thank you. I'll give an update from the park board, a couple of exciting things. The Miami Park over here received some upgrades with walking paths, and there's a lighting project for that. The ice skate rink is moving forward, the park department has hired an individual to run that from mid-November through mid-January, so it'll be a big opening just before Thanksgiving, and they're in the process right now hiring staff, and they've got a lot of plans and a lot of fun things for that, so that's going to be really exciting. And then lastly, the pickleball courts are the first in Portage, the five pickleball courts over at Willland Park opened up a week or so ago, they had a nice grand opening, and they've been getting a lot of use already, so that, that, those were all three really exciting projects going on with the park department. Any other committee reports? Okay, I don't believe we have any old business, we do have new business, we have the approval to redistrict the boundaries of the elementary schools. We have a motion to approve the redistricting of the boundaries of the elementary schools. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion or questions? Very non-call, roll please.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes, trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Go. She's wigged, I see she's got her laptop. Okay, next we've got the approval to continue the ISBA membership for 2026.
So, for the Indiana School Board Association, as you know, there are various opportunities and services that we are afforded with this membership. The cost is $6,250 a year. The renewed membership includes our board training, attendance, seminars, webinars about student attendance, new board member academies, collective bargaining, procedural updates, policy review and development, and so much more.
Do we have a motion to approve the, continuing the ISBA membership?
I make a motion to approve the ISBA membership.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion?
Comments to make, you mentioned we have a lot of opportunities for training, professional development, to set teachers and other people in different careers, new continuing education, so do we, and we do attend the local one, of course, the regional one, that's going to be tomorrow, the state, and at times we have attended the national one, but this one in Indiana, I really appreciate the opportunity to network with other individuals, other board members, and we exchange ideas and thoughts, and, you know, we learn and share from each other, so developing those connections in addition to everything else that they provide is very beneficial.
Thank you, and I would echo a lot of that, and I think it's, it's been invaluable to us as a board, to the resources we gain from there, and I think that our board probably is one of the top of the state as far as participation, most everyone on this board has received various certifications and awards for participation in the continuing education programs and things that they offer, and again, for the $6,250, it's, it's, it's well worth it to keep us informed, keeps us up to rest as well, as far as law changes and advocacy type of, type of things that they bring to us, and the call to actions that protect our public schools and protect our teachers, and so it's, it's important for us to be part of that, and again, I'm always proud when we participate, that we always, it's a, the whole board is always, is always there and engaged with it, and I think that's really helpful for all of us.
That state health that we've attended for the last several years gives us an opportunity to speak with the individuals in Indianapolis and go to those sessions, and it's very beneficial, I really appreciate having that opportunity.
Thank you.
I think it's also great, the, the legal services that come with that through working with Lisa Tansel and Julie Slavens regarding anything regarding educational law or different things that just are part of that membership cost, so that we can kind of also gauge across the state kind of what some unique situations are that are arising, and I know that that's also just a helpful piece.
Thank you, call roll please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes, trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Okay, now one of our favorite discussions every year is the discussion of the 2026, 2027 school year calendar.
So, Dr. Stevens developed two calendars to kind of give you a highlight of these two for consideration, and I always appreciate that, you know, you allow us to share in advance, and then that opportunity for you to digest it until our next meeting, and hopefully we can then take that to a vote for the November 10th meeting and give our folks plenty of time to digest this. So the two calendars, of course, both are 180 days of instruction. The first calendar is for Portage to begin school on August 17th, which is similar to this particular school year for '25-'26. That would mean that we would be starting exactly five days after what most in the county are doing, as we did this year, so we would be starting the 17th, they would start the 12th. The second calendar is, oh, I'm sorry, that would then mean that Portage would end school June 2nd, with graduation on the 9th, and on average in the county, they would be ending May 28th, so just a couple of days before us, again, about a week's difference there. The second calendar is similar to the remaining other districts, correct? Just so that you have both of those to consider. If you recall a few years back, when the board, when the Portage Board moved to adjusting at least one week, that has since, last year I believe was the first year, so for this calendar, that everyone else adjusted the one week, so it's just a matter of looking at which of the two preference, and I know that you guys get a lot of input from your constituents, so I wanted to make sure you have this in plenty of time to kind of think through it.
Great, and this will come back November the 10th meeting?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions now? And if not, certainly send your questions to Dr. Allen, or Dr. Stevens, or...
How much input do the teachers have? In terms of...
So what we have typically done is we work through any, once we have kind of an indication of where, where the board would like us to head, I will tell you that there have been situations in both circumstances. I had a lot of feedback this year for those who, maybe for the first time, were able to put their own child on a bus because we started a few days later, and knowing that never is there a calendar that is identical if you're not residing in Portage Township or your children coming with you like you can as the state law allows. So there are always pros and cons on both sides of it when we ask for input. At this point in time, knowing that it's very similar to this year, and it's a matter of just a few days off, I have not gathered any input, I wanted to kind of see where you guys wanted to head with that. If you guys would like me to seek out input, I'd be happy to do that, whatever you think is best.
Yeah, I mean, I think inputs all around is always good.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, anybody have any other questions about the school year calendar? Okay, next we move on to the approval of contract service agreements and subscriptions. We've got the, for the curriculum department from Securely, for Securely Digital Hall Pass software subscription from November 1st, 2025 to July 31st, 2026, in the amount of $9,128.57 to be paid from the education fund. Curriculum department from Renaissance for data integration software subscription from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, in the amount of $3,125 to be paid from the education fund. From the communications department, from EDO for ADA website management and PACE add-on software subscription from September 15th, 2025 through September 14th, 2026, in the amount of $4,000 to be paid from the operations fund. We've got communications department for Parent Square for family communication platform software subscription from September 1st, 2025 to August 30th, 2026, in the amount of $32,802 to be paid from the operations fund. We've got the IT data department from RAS Technology for PSCB development, Custom Power School Report software subscription from July 1st, 2025 to July 5th, 2026, in the amount of $790 to be paid from the education fund. IT data department for Gibson Tel- Teladata, or what is it, Nutella Software for the phone system, software subscription from November 19th, 2025 through November 18th, 2026, in the amount of $12,591.32 to be paid from the operations fund. We've got IT data department from CI Solutions for ID card system support subscription from October 31st, 2025 to October 30th, 2026, in the amount of $6,475 to be paid from the operations fund. We'll entertain a motion to approve these service contracts, contract agreements as read, and I, I trust everyone's had an opportunity to look at these in advance before this meeting, so we'll entertain that motion right away.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion or questions about any of those items? Any hearing non-call, roll please.
Trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes.
Next, we've got the approval to declare assets as obsolete and worthless property. Dr. Allen, I wasn't going to say anything about Wilma.
I know. We would like to declare approximately 50 units of the iPad charging cards as obsolete. We're seeking approval to dispose of and remove these from our asset register. These carts were acquired over 10 years ago.
We have a motion to approve the, declaring the assets as obsolete and worthless property for this vote. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Can you call roll please?
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes, trustee Ramion?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to our superintendent reports.
Of course, I'm grateful for the amount of collaboration and the faith that the board has had in my leadership team to develop this plan for the seven elementaries and the movement to the intermediate and middle school concept. Of course, I recognize this comes with a lot of trepidation, not only for our teachers and staff, but also for the families, as they are going to be, you know, kind of navigating some new territory, maybe sooner than they anticipated, where traditionally your child stays at the same school that you've loved all those years as a fifth grader, but I have complete confidence in our teachers, our support staff, and our administrative team, that these students will continue to be in good hands because we've always taken the approach that they are all ours, so even if those adjustments come at a time sooner than would normally by moving to a new school in the intermediate grades, I think that our families will quickly find out that we've really worked hard to minimize their concerns, and we'll communicate regularly with them so that they can see that this lasting impact and improvements for what we can offer educationally in Portage will really be to a benefit for their students. I want to also just really lean into the, the key here, which is what our people do every day, and that's to prioritize the needs of our kids. I've not had a single conversation with any employee in this district that didn't feel like making these adjustments to provide the best opportunities for kids was unnecessary, even though it comes with a lot of moving pieces for all of them. Everyone has leaned into learning about the opportunities that will come, being very positive about the prospects, and being willing to own the changes that are ahead, and look as excited to them as they can while there's still the unknowns and the legwork that has to be done, even in just moving. I want to just mention that the continued efforts to be fiscally responsible and planning for facilities that our kids and our staff deserve, as well as this community, has been at the forefront of the decisions, only second to making sure our kids have their needs met. We'll continue the meetings that we've had, the, the opportunity to continue to connect with our people is a true privilege, and I appreciate their openness to it. As we look at these opportunities that arise, I just want to share with you as well, we're also planning some opportunities with Portage Fire and Portage Police, because with the demolition of that building comes an opportunity for training for their workforce, and of course, we want to prioritize any way we can that it helps them with their mission and their ability to meet the needs of this community as well. I think it goes without saying, this board has always allowed for us to prioritize the needs of the district instead of just waiting for things to happen to us. What you look at the change in legislation, you look at the change in school funding, buildings... buildings being underutilized, and what does that mean? And in Portage, we've not waited until those situations become a part of the circumstances at our door, we just simply make the best of them, and I think this is a great example of how everyone, those in this room, those who are watching, have prioritized that so that we can continue to do great things for kids. Again, I don't want to minimize that this change is challenging, and it causes some difficulty in, in feelings and emotions, but in the end, I think that collectively our kids, our community, our schools will be stronger with the adjustments to be made. And to have our first new building since 1979 is something everyone can be really proud of, and knowing we're prioritizing all middle schoolers to go through that, I think says a lot. So thank you.
And we're doing that without referendum or raising tax.
Very true.
Which is pretty exciting.
Very true.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Ellen, or her report, or anything else from the board?
I'd like to add that I did listen to your podcast, and it was, it was interesting. You talked about enrollment and boundaries, and you talked about the professional development on behavior strategies, and you ended with joy is necessary, and I appreciate your words, and I'm sure everyone else is too.
Thank you. I had a, I had a dear colleague of mine who I worked with originally when I was student teaching, and she sent me a picture of her watching it in the car, and it said Ellen as an AM on her radio screen, and I was like, for a moment, like starstruck about myself just because I didn't expect that you would actually see that on Spotify, so it's kind of like, oh, yeah, it was just a moment I had. It's not as exciting as it sounded, but...
I know, big deal.
Yeah.
And I also had the opportunity to go to the high school for the send-off, the marching band.
Yes.
And we are so proud of them. I felt the excitement, and there was a little bit of anxiety there too with the students, and I appreciated all the businesses that donated breakfast items for them. It was really, really, really great.
Great, thank you. One thing, just to report, last week, we had, in my role with the Portage GDC, we held our manufacturing 360, which Dr. Stevens and Melissa were a big part of. It was just another great day. We took the students, I believe there was around 60 of them, to Ratner Steel over in the Port of Indiana, where they got to see that process of taking coiled steel and flattening it, and sizing it, and cutting it, and shipping it out all over the world, really, which was really cool. And then we went to Monasol, who makes the water soluble films that you see on Tide Pods and dishwasher tablets, and, and to see their process, and, and both companies did a great job of explaining and talking about the jobs, the training that you would need to, to go to work there, and, you know, what great careers they have, and so many various things. So, and then at the end of the day, we took them to Ivy Tech, where they got to see some advanced manufacturing in, in some places where you can get some certifications, associate degrees, and different things to help with those jobs, so, but I just really want to compliment, I thought the, the counselors did a great job, but their students were just, they were just outstanding. They were engaged, they paid attention, they, they asked questions, they were, it was really, it seems to get better, you know, as we do these programs, the kids get better and better, and again, these couldn't be more proud, and from talking to the companies that were, they all echoed the same thing, that it's like, wow, what a great group of students, and how much they enjoyed doing that. So again, thank you to Portage Township Schools for participating in that, and allowing us to work on those programs and, and do those things for the kids, and it's pretty exciting.
You did get a public comment?
Yes.
Desa Kelly, representing PAT.
Speech.
I am going to try to not have a lot to say. Hi, I'm Desa, I represent Portage Association of Teachers. With a lot of our other teachers here, we're all part of one big group, and I love it. The, as part of the bargaining team, I wanted to send a sincere thank you. This was such a collaborative, positive experience, and I want to express my gratefulness to all of you for allowing us to have that experience. It was really fantastic. I did hear when the calendar was discussed about questions about if the teachers had had any chance to give info on that. As part of our bargaining process, we always survey our members before bargaining starts, and every year, there are just timely questions. So as we were in it with starting school a little bit later this year, we did survey our teachers and ask, and I like to share that information and some of the comments. And if you would like a more specific report with the, I don't know, 60-something comments that were left, because there's, I'm always a big like, what's the yes or no, and then here's the open response room? So just to let you know, of the surveys that were submitted, 85% responded that they would prefer to have teacher workdays on Monday and Tuesday, and have the first student day start on a Wednesday of that week. And then 15% of them responded that they would prefer to have teacher work, excuse me, teacher workdays on Thursday and Friday, and have the first student day the following Monday, as we did this year. So that was just the data that we got from teachers. I don't know what day I sent it, but I dated it September 2025. Some of the things, I just remembered them saying that were concerns, and there are little hiccups, but the result of these many hiccups is somewhat significant for you to consider. Maybe your graduates have a difficult time because our calendar this year for the end of our semester ends into January. So it makes them, it makes it difficult for them to start any post-secondary programs because they don't have their graduation requirements certified before colleges start for their next semester back in January. Another thing related to that are the AP exams and all of the I tests, because when we start later, we are giving our students one less week than our surrounding districts, but yet, in many cases, as you know, our test scores are compared to theirs. I want to talk about kindergartners coming for a full five days in a row. They are separated from their moms and dads and caregivers, and that is sometimes a lot emotionally because they're not used to going to school for a full day, and sometimes having that three day and the return home for the weekend is meaningful to them. Same thing with some of our emotionally fragile kids who are coming in from summer situations that might be less ideal, and then just the allot that is back to school full-time, 100 miles per hour for five days in a row. I want to talk also about our CTE program. Our CTE kids go to schools all over, and there's to some degree an inherent lack of alignment of calendars, but what I don't want that to, what I don't want to happen is that so many of our kids are missing out on those first three days of those CTE classes, which are so important. Also, the secondary students continuing their semester over break to some degree means that some of them will not get a relaxing holiday break that we want them to have because they come right back and they have finals. And then when we talk about those juniors and seniors who are going for credits that they absolutely need, that just creates a gap in their learning and a more stressful situation over their holiday break. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else this evening? No, let's see, our next meeting, we've got, tomorrow night, we do have the ISBA Fall Regional Meeting, I believe everyone will be attending that, and our next meeting is November the 10th, that will be at Central Elementary. So with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.